Chairman, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, this is the quietest this chamber has ever been. And ladies and gentlemen, you're very welcome. We welcome your family and friends and we're delighted that you're here with us this evening for this special chairman's award. This is the headquarters of the county council and this is where our councillors meet at least once a month, not often. Today is a pleasant evening for them because last year, or last week, we were here debating the budget. As you can imagine, that can be a difficult process and, you know, it's while there's preparation going on for a number of months beforehand, the decisions have to be made on that final day. So luckily, our councillors decided at five o'clock to pass the budget, not like their colleagues in Donegal who went down to five o'clock in the morning. We as the exec were delighted when they decided at five o'clock to pass it. Just looking at your career today, I was amazed to see you have time for Face of Ireland. We're so busy before then and now you have this extra responsibility. So it is fitting, I think, that the county council here would honour the achievements of Anita and the honour she's brought to the county. So in first, our county manager will just say a few words. It's the format here today, the county manager say a few words, and then the chairman will say a few words and make the presentation. So county manager, if you'd like.
Thank you, John. Colonel, look, elected members, Anita, you're very, very welcome and Anita's family, you're also very welcome. In particular, her grandmother who's here, you've got a particular welcome from us all. So it's just great firstly to join and to congratulate you on your selection. You're probably well past that now at this stage. It's great to see somebody from Drong and Cavan getting to such a position because she is very much a public face now for our country. And it's just, again, from a county point of view, it's great that it's one of our own that's there, whose, I go, her main role is to promote the country as a whole, but I know as well as that she will be mindful of our native county, particularly coming after the fly etcetera, and the efforts we're making here to promote tourism and to promote the county and get the name out there. So it's another step forward in the right direction. We're also doing some branding on the county at the moment and Anita's face will hopefully feature very prominently in that. So that's also very welcome. I think the overall initiative is great. I mean, I think Anita's background was in the voluntary sector, as I understand it, working with the trappers, and she came forward from that and gained this very great honour that she has. So it's highly commendable that she's come through in that regard. So I guess the year is ongoing. I know you've got a lot of functions on. I believe you may be involved in the New York parade. So that's going to be really interesting. We look forward to that. After seeing you there, up there, the head of that, I'm told, it'll be another great day for Cavan. So without further ado, I think that's as much as I'd like to say to you. I'd like to welcome you all here to the chamber as chairman has done and hope you have a very good evening. Thank you.
Thanks, manager. The other thing I forgot to give a special welcome to, Brian Cunningham and Pardik Guilford from Sky TV, and also to the other members of the media who are here this evening. Anita has already helped us greatly in the Taste of Ireland and even with our, in the town here at Christmas, with our turning on the Christmas lights and that. So she is well known right around the county at this stage. We look forward to continuing work with you, Anita. So now I ask on the category of Cavan head councillors, councillor Paddy O'Reilly.
Manager, Mr Finn, first of all, I would like to say a very sincere word of welcome here to Anita here, the Face of Ireland winner, and also say a very special word of welcome also to her parents, Franklin and Theresa, who are with her here as well today. And to say a very special welcome to her grandmother, Mrs Annie Brady, who has also accompanied the large entourage that is here today. We've had a number of chairmans, secrts over the years, but I don't think any family or any recipient brought so many with her. I want to say to my fellow councillors, jealousy will let you know. I have to say this, when I was invited down to Drong on Sunday, in October, for the event, I have to say I'm very much taken back by the, not just the number of people who turned out, but with the great community spirit that there was in welcoming one of their own home and for that achievement. And her achievement is many fold because she had huge competition. And I was reading through the CB there where she did her, one of her interviews from the United States via Skype. I wish we could vote that way. Or do our canvassing that way. But she didn't have to participate even the semi-final. She got straight through to the final. But just to give some people maybe a little bit of background on her role, and she graduated in 2012 as a secondary school teacher of history and geography. Anita's ambitions participating in the competition must have become the face of Ireland ambassador at home and abroad and head showcase of Irish treasures. The winner would grasp, with the charity grasp, greater responsibility and awareness in suicide prevention. And I think Annie Gallagher takes on that role, has a very definitive role in life and that she herself has the capacity to do that. You know, suicide prevention is the responsibility of all of us, but her role in it, and particularly having won the competition which she did, I think, you know, it may help some people along life's journey. Having said that, the fact that she has been accompanied here by the TV crew, by Sky, I think that that is, it's great to see some of her own being, given that assistance along the way because it is a difficult time to get sponsorship nearly in any role, but particularly the role that she is in, I think that it's very necessary. I'd like to compliment all involved in the part that they have played in it. Anita is not just a pretty face. I won't say where she got the good looks from. But she has them anyway. And my earliest memories of going to Drong was a long time ago, playing on the old field in the middle of winter and trying to find a spot to put down the ball to play against. I never thought so many years later, being down to work and a pretty girl like this to come. But I do wish you well in the role that you're in and to date, in the number of events that you have attended, you have done the competition that you have won proud and you have done the organisation which you are also representing your pride. And I think that in itself speaks for yourself. I'm sure you're an ambitious girl, but we have spent a long good few hours here today debating local authority and what's going to happen at the next election. I advise you, please talk into politics as you know. I wish you, and I mean this very sincerely, because you are a very genuine person and a treasure to meet and a pleasure to meet as well, I wish you the very, very best in your role and I have no doubt that you will carry out your responsibilities and your role in it to the very best of your ability down through the years. And I do wish you well on your trip to New York. I've been there in the past myself. And to be a part of the parade there with the Cavan people and the Cavan immigrants is a memory that you bring into old age. And I'm speaking from experience and I look forward to going to it there myself. But it is a great honour to walk up Fifth Avenue with the Cavan contingentment and I personally look forward to meeting you there. So I wish you the very best and it gives me great pleasure on behalf of Cavan County Council to make this presentation to you. Now, we have to say a few words.
Oh, what do you say? Chairman O'Reilly, county manager Keith, Mr Finn, councillors and family and friends. It's with the greatest of honour that I stand here this evening as the 2013 Face of Ireland, but more as a small girl, a young girl from a small village in Drong in County Cavan, accepting this honour, this real honour from yourselves, little did I think this time last year when I was in college preparing lesson plans and freaking out thinking, oh my God, am I going to get an inspection today? Or, and going to lectures in Galway, that this time now, on the 14th of January, that I be standing here receiving such an honour in my own county and with my family and my friends and all these esteemed representatives of my county here. And I want to really thank you, Chairman O'Reilly, for hosting this event this evening. I really, really appreciate it. And everyone who's been involved, everyone at Cavan County Council who are involved in making this such a really special evening for me and such an honour. As I look back on 2012, it's just been such an amazing year and I think I'll definitely look back on it as one of the greatest years of my life, of my young life, I suppose. But definitely, it like, I feel like I really developed as a person and my confidence really grew. Like achieving my masters on my HST and getting the opportunity to go to Washington as an intern and, you know, meeting incredible people and learning from them and making incredible lifelong friends who are here, some of them here this evening. It really changed me and it gives me such great confidence. There's no way this time last year I would have been able to stand up here and speak or, you know, like speak like at all, like I was just too nervous to approach people. But that experience and my experience and journey through the Face of Ireland right up to the night of the final was another really kind of formative time for me and a time when I was really able to develop my confidence and, you know, come to the place where I am now. And I suppose like, you know, winning on that night was such a humbling moment and I was, cannot even describe how proud I was and how proud I continue to be. Over in America during the summer, I've seen, I just developed this overwhelming sense of pride of being from Ireland and, you know, just being Irish, like they love the Irish over there and you're just so proud to be Irish. And, but you never think that you're going to have the opportunity to actually, you know, showcase that or to do something about it. And definitely this year, I think, is my year to, to really show how proud I am to be Irish, to show how proud I am to be from Cavan. And so like, it's with the confidence and pride and passion and positivity that this year, I'm really going to work really hard on Cavan's behalf, on my country's behalf, to showcase all that we have here, all that's attractive and all that's positive. The beautiful scenery we have, the friendly personalities we have and the local businesses that we have here. And I think this year, more than ever, as you said, Mr Keith, about the gathering, it's the perfect year to showcase what we have and to attract people to want to come here and enjoy and appreciate everything that's good about County Cavan and Ireland as a whole. And I suppose the incredible opportunity to go to New York in March and to officially launch the parade there and provides a perfect opportunity for me to reach out to the Irish diaspora there and to remind them of home and to attract them back here and, you know, to really let them know how proud I am, how proud we are as a country to have like 70 million people claim roots back in Ireland. And I know at these tough times and tough economic times and as you were talking about, you're debating the budget and we can kind of get bogged down. And as a young person, I think for me in my role, it's kind of a role that I will kind of use to remain positive and to promote and to remind people what's good about Ireland and what we have here and what we need to appreciate here. I suppose in the role as well this year, a huge important part of it will be to promote positive mental health and to promote suicide prevention, of course, to really promote and to fundraise progress. The associate charity with Face of Ireland's Greater Responsibility and Awareness in Suicide Prevention. And it's something that I'm really, really passionate about and it's one of my main goals this year. If anything was to come out of this year, I would love to see, you know, the stigma often attached with suicide to be eliminated and for people to be able to talk openly and honestly about mental health. And I think like we can all do, play a part in that, like I can play a part, we can all play a part in that. And just last Friday, myself and Brian took part in, we gave a lecture to a group of transition year students about suicide and mental health. And it really, you could see the difference it made for them just to see, just to know that, to look out for one another, to talk to each other, to make sure that, you know, just a kind word or a smile or something, to look out for one another. And it's more important than ever now. And I think I'm going to really put my heart and soul into working towards that and, and hopefully making a difference in that area. I've probably rattled on way too long here now, but really, I'm just honoured to be here this evening. I'm honoured to have all you here, to have all your support right here and to have your support always, like my family and friends. You are always there and I couldn't and I wouldn't be here without you. So I hope that in the coming year, if there's anything I can do for you at all, big or small, personal or public, anything, yes. There we go, I said it, the decoration is on TV. So if there's anything I can do, don't hesitate to get in contact. I look forward to doing as much as I can to make all of our upcoming events for the gathering and successes. So thank you very much for your time.
Good to use one, thanks.
Glad to be joined now by Jack Eas in the council chamber at this wonderful event. Jack, of course, is the county manager. A great evening so far.
Yes, as you can hear from the sounds behind us, there's a very lively crowd and a huge crowd here to honour the, I suppose, the award that's been given to Anita this evening, which is the chairman's reception, which is something we bestow on Cavan people who have achieved something significant and Anita has done that in our view this year.
A great ambassador, a young ambassador for Cavan.
Well, it's great to see somebody so young and vibrant representing the county, putting forward that really positive face that we're trying to develop for the county. She's going to be part of our branding which we're doing for the county. Our face will appear on that. She'll be at the head of the parade, launching the parade in New York this year, the big parade along Fifth Avenue. So it's great to see a young lady from Drong in County Cavan doing that. She's also been very, very mindful of her county's roots and even though she has to promote the whole country, which is fair enough, she's also doing quite a lot for Cavan as well.
Great ambassador. And just quickly, maybe you can tell us a little bit about what's happening in Cavan then for the gathering this year.
Yeah, well, the kernel of the gathering this year is the efforts being made by individual communities. So what we have is we have about 30 different proposals in now which are quite good, quite strong. And they vary from a new festival in Cavantown, which is going to happen the last week in August, which should be really exciting, with a traditional music part to it and an arts part to it. But also, a lot of communities are developing their existing festivals. So for example, in my own town of Arva, there's a 10-day festival on combining the show and the big walk they have there. But that's very, just a typical example of what's happening right around the county. So the onus is on people now to try and get visitors to come back and I think a lot of people are doing that already. So it's going to be a great year. There's going to be plenty going on. I think the hotels are very, very excited about it as well. They're hoping for an increase in revenue and businesses likewise. The shops had a good enough Christmas around Cavan. So things are quite good here at the moment, relatively speaking.
And I suppose the last three years, Cavan having had the fly here was a great anchor as well for actually putting Cavan on the world map.
Yes, indeed. Not only did it bring 100 million euros into the local economy, but it put the name out there. And as you know, Cavan is not known. When people talk about Irish counties, they think about Galway and Kerry. But Cavan is one of the lesser known and there's such an amount of beauty and such a great number of things you can do in Cavan. I think it's going to be a real tourist destination in the future. So it's our job to get out there and tell people about it and let them come here.
Right. So lots happening in Cavan in the year ahead? Okay, Jack Eas, Cavan County Manager. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
...by Anita Brady, who is the Face of Ireland. Congratulations again, Anita. I know we had you in the studio a few months ago. How has it been for you so far?
Oh, it's been amazing, Angie. Oh my God, I've had so many wonderful opportunities since then. I've attended so many different events and had my homecoming to Drong and then this event here this evening has been incredible to get the honour of Cavan. It's something really special.
And I believe you're doing something big in March for St Patrick's Day.
Oh yeah, I can't wait. I'm going to be going to New York, to New York for the St Patrick's Day parade to officially launch the parade there. So, I mean, that is just going to be amazing. I'm so excited about it.
Have you been to it before, the parade?
I've been to New York before, but I've never been to the parade and I have family over there. So they're so excited as well. Like, so it's going to be like a big family reunion like as well. So it's really nice.
Great. So a little bit of pleasure and a little bit of family and a little bit of work all in one?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. It's really exciting, you know, to go because there's so many Irish people in New York and in America. You know, it'd be really nice to be over there representing my country at that time, you know. It'd be really, really exciting.
And maybe, Paddy, as the chairman of the council here in Cavan, you can tell us a little bit about the plaque that you've presented here tonight to Anita?
Well, the plaque, I suppose, speaks for itself. You know, we acknowledge the pride and honour that you brought to our county on being chosen as the Face of Ireland and for your promotion of County Cavan. We here declare you are worthy of this very special honour being conferred on you here today. I suppose that speaks for itself and I think she is a very worthy recipient of it.
A great young ambassador for Cavan.
She is indeed. Not alone as she good looks, but she's got a steady determination and a purpose in what she's doing as well. And I think for that she should be complimented on it and just to wish her every success in her role. And she didn't get there by accident. It was a long, hard competition. But she came through in the end. And I think that those who chose her for the role that she's in will be very, very proud of what they did, of their choice as well.
Good choice. So you mentioned some of the events that you've been doing. Maybe just tell us a little bit about those.
Yeah, absolutely, Angie. Last weekend, I was actually in Ballyshanin at the local Late Late Show. It was so, Ryan, everybody better watch out. I know. It was, all the proceeds was for GRASP, the suicide awareness and prevention charity that we're supporting this year. So that was, it was really, really nice evening, really nice event. I've had, we have another event coming up now this week on Wednesday. GRASP are launching their app, their phone app. So people can now, you know, download the app for their phone. That's taking place on Wednesday in the Berkeley Court Hotel in Dublin. And I've had the opportunity to complete a mental health awareness and training course and had the opportunity to switch on the lights here in Cavan at Christmas, which was brilliant as well, and be involved in the Taste of Cavan as well. So lots of really, really exciting events and a lot more to come. We're hosting the first Face of Business Awards in April, which is an excellent opportunity for us to be able to promote business and to appreciate what many businesses are doing around the country and locally here in Cavan as well. So people can log on to faceofireland.com/awards and they can get nominating for their businesses. And we have so many awards from hairdressers to milliners to Young Entrepreneur of the Year. And then another very special event coming up this year, I suppose, will be the Face of Kindness Awards. And that's really in recognition of the hard work and the kind of special work that's going on behind the scenes that people don't always see, that somebody who's doing, going that extra mile in your community. And people can also get, log on to faceofireland.com/awards and get nominating for those awards as well. So those are very exciting events that are coming up in the near future.
And that's the first time that those awards have been launched?
Yeah, it's the inaugural year of those awards. So it'll be really exciting.
So any advice then to our maybe younger viewers out there who are maybe interested in getting involved in the Face of Ireland for next year?
Absolutely. I'd say apply and, you know, put your heart and soul into it. It's such an amazing opportunity. When I applied, I never expected, you know, the opportunities that would arise out of it. But not only that, even in the weeks coming up to the final and that, and the confidence that, you know, to be able to come out and stand on a stage and to speak and the confidence you develop, if anything, that would be the greatest thing that you would get even, you know, from just applying and being involved in the competition.
And how can people find out about it?
They will be holding heats in different counties around the country within the coming months. So there will be details. All they need to do is log on to faceofireland.com and all the details are on there. They can apply for the competition through the website.
Anita, the very best of luck in New York. I'm sure you'll do a great job. I'm joined now by Brian Cunningham, who's actually the owner of the Face of Ireland competition. Brian, you picked a good Cavan woman here.
Well, I would love to take the credit of myself, Angie, but there was a very good judging panel there. But listen, the judging panel that we had really did a very good job in picking Anita Brady. Anita is probably, it's very hard to explain how good Anita is. When you see her out and even this evening here in Cavan County Council, when you see the wealth of, I suppose, experience that this girl has in public speaking now, you have to remember, she was crying three months ago. And now she's out dealing with national media and you know yourself how intimidating that can be on a daily basis. She has a pride, she has a passion for her county. She's a passion for Cavan, for the area she comes from, from the small village of Drong. And I think that's, that's very much testament of what we are looking for at the Face of Ireland. She'll go to New York, she'll launch the St Patrick's Day parade in New York, she'll go to London, she'll be at different events throughout the year. I suppose Italy is coming up as well and Spain. And the one thing that you can be guaranteed with Anita is that she's going to sell Cavan extremely well. And that's what people want. People want an ambassador to go out there and sell their county to the best way they can. Anita comes from a wonderful family. She has a great family background behind her. She's a wealth of experience. She has a great education background behind her as well. And she has the passion to continue and to do the best what she possibly can. From the judges' point of view, of the judges that were there on the night, Debbie Allen, John Jerome's, Jill Wallace, Ashley Mangan and Denise Smith, I think they did a wonderful job at picking Anita. There was a wealth of girls who had extremely good talent and are wonderful girls. But I think Anita maybe was described as the surprise on the night, but she
The wild card.
She definitely hasn't been the surprise. She, the passion that this girl has, you can't really, you can't really say it in enough words. You hear her interviews on various different newspapers, radio stations this week. And, you know, obviously, a pride and a passion to do her bit, not alone for mental health and for suicide prevention, which is something that we're very closely associated with. And I know Mary McTiernan and that's here this evening. You know, but even just the way she goes about it and the friendliness and the catmead of fortune, that's what an ambassador is all about. And I think she's doing it wonderfully.
So then just tell us a little bit maybe about the actual competition itself. How long is it going? Why did you set it up?
Why did we set it up and how long has it's going? It's going seven years this year. It was set up, I suppose, I had a background in being involved in various different competitions as a judge myself. We felt that there was something missing at that time and in turn we moved forward from that and we decided, okay, we'll try something different. And we set up the first year and probably one of the most difficult years that we ever had was the first year of the competition. And it was just like that for every business. But in turn, we continued on with it. We moved forward with it. And in turn, we went to Anita's year with 32,000 applications who applied to Face of Ireland, from initially 150 in the first year. And I suppose the more we're going to whittle it out county by county. I suppose that's more challenging, it's more time consuming, but at the end of the day, when you have an ambassador like Anita Brady, we need the cream of what we have to offer and I think that's the only way we're going to get the cream of the crop, by going into the hearts of the communities and looking at the girls. I suppose we're very proud of Face of Ireland, Face of Ireland has helped many, many different charities. Let alone that, my own experience was, I tried to commit suicide seven years ago and I suppose it's something I'm not very proud of, of saying that I tried to do it, but out of something so raw and so difficult at a time in my own personal life, something so good has come out of it. And I think, you know, we've supported several different charities down through the years and Mary McTiernan and Noel and Claire and the group at GRASP that are here tonight, I suppose the, something so raw, so bitter, so hard, something so good has come out of it.
So you've turned it around into a positive thing?
Positive thing and I think it's important. And I think it's important that, you know, Anita spoke about it initially in her speech earlier on this evening, where, you know, there's a lot to be said for saying hello to someone, you don't know what's going on inside someone else's head. For me personally, it was a scenario where people thought, you know, he was the happiest fellow going. But on the inside, I suppose I came from a radio broadcasting background, a hotelier background, and people would have just assumed that I was the happy...
That you're okay.
Yeah. And in turn, there was a lot to be said to going home in the evening and there's a lot to be said now for advice for people is, and especially with young people at the minute, the figures are recently after coming out again for 2012, it's horrific, the number of people that are attempting, that have succeeded unfortunately. But I think, I think out of, if we can say hello to someone, if we can just do the simple things, it may just get those people back through the dark day. There's loads of different circumstances on why people are committing suicide. What people need to remember, and people will say that suicide is a selfish act, which I totally refute, because at that time, what that person is going through is the most worrying, it's the most saddest, it's the most darkest time of their life. They believe, they believe, in my case, I believe that my people were better off not being, that I wasn't here. But not to go on the dark side of it, but I think it's important that people talk more openly about depression and I suppose that was the remit, that mental health and suicide and that's why it was so important for us to promote mental health and suicide prevention through Face of Ireland and through our other organisations as well.
And unfortunately, of course, we've heard quite a lot about it recently in the media as well among young people.
Unfortunately, it is and, you know, in my own, I come from County Donegal, we've had very sad cases there recently with two sisters and many others, young candidates. It's very, very sad, it's, you know, your heart would go out to the families that are associated and affected. But one thing I always say is as well, for those people that had to go through it, it's a very dark, it's a very untimely hour. Different people have different experience and I'm, you know, I'm speaking from my own experience, whether it's the fear of the telephone ringing, the banks ringing, whether it's the fear of a boyfriend, girlfriend, whether it's the fear of whatever, that's the most important thing to that person at that time and they don't see a way out. And they think the only way out is by finishing and terminating their lives. But I think more, I think the government unfortunately need to really come out and really need to do more for suicide and mental health, but let alone that, they need to start at a younger age, they need to start in the national schools, we've been doing talks this week in schools in Galway and they need to be going in and funding people to go in to do that, so that people are learning about suicide and mental health at a young age, that it's okay. Because if we are in a situation now where we're seeing so many young girls and boys committing suicide in this country, how are they going to handle more severe pressure when they go down the road? And I think we're going to have an epidemic here if we don't do something.
Needs to be tackled, young.
Needs to be tackled at a young age and there isn't a family that doesn't know someone that hasn't been affected by suicide. But again, I think that has to move forward from that and I think it has to taught at a younger age and I think people need to, let's look at facts, years ago in this country, you couldn't be buried in a Catholic graveyard if you committed suicide. You know, there were stigmas against you having a funeral, there was, it's a disease in its own right, mental health is a disease and until people realise what that is, they really need to do it. But I suppose that's what we're here to, we're here to talk about Anita Brady this evening and I suppose Anita Brady is a wonderful person, she is a very kind, caring, genuine person, comes from a great family background and I suppose she, I can honestly say, she has been a breath of fresh air since she was selected as the Face of Ireland. I think she's a great ambassador for Drung, for Cavan and indeed for this country and I think that this Face of Ireland is a stepping stone. We've always said it's a stepping stone and I think that stepping stone, you're going to hear a lot more about Anita Brady in the future.
And of course, she's the first Cavan winner as well.
She's actually the second.
Oh, she's the second?
She's the second, in earlier years.
Must be something good about Cavan people then.
And not too far away either, the second, in the second year, I suppose Heather McGardle, who was from Coot Hill, would have been the Face of Ireland as well. But in turn, I suppose as the profile of Face of Ireland has lifted and increased over the years, I suppose you're hearing a lot more and I think you're going to hear a lot more about Anita Brady. I think, you know, the way the community has come out to support her, the way you guys and the local media and the national media have addressed Anita, to Sky Media, you know, to have Sky coming to Cavan three times in a certain amount of time, you know, all of that has helped and I think she will do her county proud, I know she'll do her county proud and I know she wears her heart on her sleeve and I know she's a grounded girl and I think, I wish her the very best of luck and I know she'll do a great job.
Great. Quickly, Anita, do you want to mention any sponsors?
I do, I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank everyone who's sponsored Face of Ireland over the years. Europe Car, of course, Reg Cai Morans Hotel, Orchid Jewels, I received some beautiful prizes and some beautiful jewellery from Orchid Jewels and flowers by Morad and Shachlin, a lot of different sponsors. And I suppose I'd like to also take this opportunity to thank everyone at the Face of Ireland team, they are doing incredible work for me, Angie, behind the scenes and this man beside me, Brian, I cannot actually thank him enough. He always has my best interests at heart, which is really something and a lot more than a manager, I definitely consider him as a really, really close friend now and now I'm really, really delighted to be in such a position, to have such an honourable title and to have such support behind me from a wonderful team.
Anita and Brian, thanks very much, thank you. I'm delighted to be joined now in the council chamber by Anita's mum and dad and her brother and sister. Mum, I think we'll start off with you first, very proud?
I am absolutely so proud of my daughter, she is just a wonderful, wonderful girl, a wonderful daughter and a wonderful person. She really is. This evening has been absolutely fabulous for the family. It's fabulous for Anita, but it's also fabulous for myself and Frank and for Donna Canifa as well. What an honour to be honoured in your hometown, in your home county, you know, it's such an honour and we're so delighted, really delighted.
Frank, did you ever think you'd see this day?
Never, never had I seen it.
It's nice to be in the courthouse for a good reason, isn't it?
Yeah, not one of them other bad reasons.
And what did you think then, Riza, when Anita told you that she was entering the competition?
I wasn't really sure, she was in Washington at the time and I wasn't really sure what it was all about and it was only when she came home from Washington, when she told me, I got really excited about it, when she saw, she told me what it really was about. Of course, you know, you never expect your own daughter to win, especially from a little village like Drung, you think, you know, somebody from a city or something is going to win, but to win it was just unbelievable, it really was. It was a fabulous night, we had, you know, it was the highlight of our year really, it was fabulous.
And are you going to travel out to New York with her now in March?
Certainly am, we are all going.
Got all the green bought, have you?
Oh, we have indeed. Well, I have two sisters, I have Noreen and Rose and my brother Noel live in New York for the last few years, so we go over and back, you know, regularly anyway, but they felt they missed out, you know, when they didn't get going to the Face of Ireland final. So we rang them, of course, on the night and they were really, really excited. And then when they heard we were coming to the New York for the parade and she was going to head it, well, my goodness, the party is going to be on, I can tell you.
So there'll be lots of unofficial functions there as well and are you going to travel out to New York as well?
Yeah, yeah, I can't wait, I was already in New York. It's an amazing place and seeing that Anita's going to be going over, it's going to be so much better.
Treated like VIPs. And what about yourself?
Unfortunately, I won't be able to travel because I have my leave insert, so I won't be there.
So you have to be sensible and stay at home and study while the rest of them go partying.
Someone has to stay with Nana, so.
Did you, were you at the competition the night that Anita won?
Yeah, I was there, yeah, it was a great night.
Lots of excitement.
Yeah, it was good, yeah.
And have you been able to rob lots of her nice clothes and shoes and everything from her?
Well, yeah, yeah, no, she's great for that, yeah, she's good.
And any stories you can tell us about her?
I could tell if you...
None that you're going to tell us on camera?
I wouldn't go there now.
Well, listen, the best of luck in New York, I'm sure you'll have a great time and thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much.